Hello. Good, whoa, hello. Good evening. We're a little blinded, so, but really excited because we first said, oh, my goodness, how can they hold the post-docs fellow symposium in such a large room? But it's very, really excited to see how many people have stayed and are going to participate today. And I think it's so important for our CTN postdoctoral fellows to have this opportunity to share with you their hard work over the last years. And I think it's, it's just exciting because we're also going to get to announce some new postdoctoral fellows who are going to join. And without further ado, I'm going to let Sharon start off with that.
Great. And I also would like to welcome everyone to come this evening. And I think it's wonderful that you can all support our post-docs. So I thought what we would start with is in the announcement of the, the new postdoctoral fellowships. Now, the, the CTN, in, in collaboration with CIHR, have offered these career opportunities to our young clinician scientists. And what it does, it facilitates research in HIV and co-infections by providing funding to candidates who want to write a research protocol, development, and then run their own clinical trial. And since 1992, the CTN has awarded over 180 fellowships to 112 individuals. And many of these individuals who have won these awards over the years, including Marina, my co-chair, have become Canada's current leading HIV clinical investigators. So the investment has been fantastic and the output has been wonderful. And I'm happy to announce some of the new fellowship awards for this cycle that have become available through CIHR, CANFAR, and the pharmaceutical companies. So the new postdoctoral fellows, and I'm not sure if they, they're here, and I'm going to embarrass them if they are, and they can stand up so everybody can see who they are. And I'll announce their projects so you know what they'll be working on. And if you're interested in their projects, maybe you can help them with some ideas as they go forward. So Monica Kawatch, if I am spelling it right, she will be supervised by Melanie Murray and Helen Cote. She will be looking at the effect of hormones on cellular aging and comorbidity in women living with HIV. The second one is Hazir Maranzad. I'm probably not saying that right. So she is the winner of the James Kreppner Postdoctoral Award. And many of you that have been with the CTN for a long time will remember James as one of our CAC members for many years. He lived with HIV and hepatitis C as a consequence of hemophilia and was a very strong advocate for our postdoctoral program. So the supervisor is Chris Power, and the project is the Inflammisone Pyopoptosis Axis and HIV Associated Neurocognitive Disorders: Activation of Gaz Dermand D in Neural Cells. So I look forward to learning something about that. Our next one is Tanya Lazor. I'm not sure if she's here. She is the CANFAR CTN Postdoctoral Fellow and will be working with Sergio Ruda. I think I saw him here. She will be working on the Behavioral Economics Intervention for the Prevention of Cannabis Use Disorder Among People Living with HIV in Ontario: A Retrospective Cohort Infusibility Trial. Oh, these names get better. Next one is Tesnime Giancaro. I'm not sure if they are here. The supervisor is Kelly O'Brien, and I think I've seen her, and will be exploring the telecoaching exercise intervention systematic perspective.
And we actually get to renew a bunch of existing postdoctoral fellowships this year. So it's our pleasure to renew Frances Wiminzey from, it's a CTN Mark Weinberg Postdoctoral Fellow, whose supervisor is Zebryma Brum, evaluating COVID-19 vaccine cross-reactivity to variants of concern among people living with HIV. Catherine Kui, she's a CTN Postdoctoral Fellow, was supervised by Bob Hogg, and I think she presented a beautiful talk today in our session earlier today on engagement in opioid agonist therapy and risk for repeat overdose in people living with and without HIV who've experienced non-fatal opioid overdose, providing insight to improve clinical care. Oscar Javier Pico Espinoza, he's the Gilead CTN Postdoctoral Fellow, who's being supervised by Dr. Darrell Tan, filling the gaps in PrEP Cascade user-centered counseling about HIV pre-exposure prophylaxis and linkage to care for gay, bisexual, and other men who have sex with men. And finally, Jeffrey Wong, who's supervised by Dr. Deborah Money, developing a prediction model for preterm births and pregnant patients living with HIV based in the British Columbia HIV perinatal database. And I think from the, first of all, a hand of applause for all of our postdoctoral fellows. Very competitive program adjudicated by dedicated staff and a, and a selection committee and who's put a lot of work into evaluating these. So thank you to the selections committee. And also, I think from the diversity of, of projects and areas of research, it's really exciting to see that, you know, it's not only HIV, we're expanding into numerous different areas from basic sciences through to implementation sciences and clinical projects. So it's a really great diverse profile of projects we're going to get to hear about.
Okay. So tonight, we have four of our current fellows that will be presenting on their research. I think three of the fellows are in their last year, and one of the fellows is in their first year. And I'm sure they're going to be a little daunted by this huge room, but we're so grateful for how many people have, have joined us. So our first speaker is Serge Vicente, who's working with.
Dr. Lubiche.
Lubiche. And I think all of us heard about this little magic app that he's been looking at, at the Lunchtime Symposium, but we're going to get more details this evening. So challenges and opportunity for an HIV patient and a CTN postdoctoral fellow, summary of an eventful journey over two years. So we welcome you, Serge, to the podium.
Okay. Does everyone hear me? Oh, my God, the light in the high. Okay. So let's go. So hello, everyone. I will talk about challenges and opportunities for HIV patient and CTN postdoctoral fellow with a summary of an eventful to hear journey. So let's talk about engage, engaging patient in research. So patient engagement implies a meaningful involvement in all steps of research. The patient has an expertise and a personal perspective on his health condition, treatments, and care. And all of this can create conditions for the appearance of a special patient, the patient researcher. So the patient researcher represents a particular level of a patient engagement in research, the partnership. So the patient is fully incorporated into the research team and contributes to the development of research questions, the clinical trial design, the trial execution, and the dissemination of results. And then the patient is acknowledged for contributions as a co-investigator, and this can bring an improvement in research. So now let me introduce me myself properly. So hello, everyone. I'm Serge Vicente, and I am, guess what, a patient researcher. But in particular, let's do what I am. So I am a statistician. I am a person living with HIV. I am a member of a patient advisory committee that gives feedback about HIV-related research projects. I have a PhD in statistics. That's a lot of things. I am a research trainee in the Research Institute of McGill University Health Center of Montreal. Here is my team, where I act as a co-author for several patient-oriented research projects with my statistical expertise. So here I am, but yes, still masked, as you can see, and more, and more, more affiliation. So I have, I am a mentor and a mentee in the Strategy for Patient-Oriented Research Chair in Innovative Clinical Trials awarded by the CIHR. And finally, I am a second-year postdoctoral fellow at CTN. That's a lot of stuff. And you can ask me, Serge, what have you done during these two years of your postdoctoral fellow? You can imagine with all this stuff, I was super busy. So let's see some of my contributions during these two years. So during the first year, I show you that this paper where I am the second author, and it is actually a protocol for a CTN pilot study to evaluate a new patient-reported outcome measure, so a PROM, of barriers to art adherence, the famous I-Score. And so the I-Score is administered with a patient portal through a smartphone application, the OPAL application. So the objective number one is to evaluate stakeholder perceptions of the I-Score innovation. Second one is to evaluate the implementation strategy with recommended implementation outcomes for PROMs in routine care. And finally, we want to evaluate the effectiveness of the intervention with patient and service outcomes. So the, the aim is to enroll four HIV physicians and 32 HIV patients. The patients complete the I-Score before meeting their physicians. Patients and physicians have access to the results, and they can consider them during the clinic visits at times one, two, three months after, and three, six months after. And implementation, patient service, and service outcomes are also collected at the three times. We still don't have the results of this study, so I cannot show you a small glance of the results. Another contribution, so in this paper, I am one of the co-authors. It is also a protocol to evaluate this time the implementation of the OPAL patient portal I just told you about for distance monitoring of self-isolating patients with COVID-19 and describe, once more, service and patient outcomes. So first objective is to qualitatively evaluate implementation outcomes such as acceptability, usability, response burden, feasibility, and fidelity. Second one, to qualitatively identify barriers to and facilitators of implementation, and once more, describe patient and service outcomes. The aim is to enroll 50 patients with COVID-19, followed during 14, 14 days. There is a daily self-assessment of symptoms, vital signs, and mental health. Questionnaires are also administered to collect sociodemographic variables, medical background, implementation outcomes, and patient satisfaction. And finally, semi-structured qualitative interviews conducted with four groups of stakeholders. And surprise, we have the results. And we submitted the results of this study finally this year in April 2023. I am the third author of this paper. And just a few results, the targeted thresholds were attained and/or surpassed for all implementation outcomes. And the qualitative findings highlight the importance of patient and stakeholder engagement in the configuration and implementation process. So that's the first year. So year number two, this paper, too, this publication, I am the second author also of this publication. This time, it is a web-based Delphi, 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 I'm a French guy, so Delphi, conducted with a panel of 97 people with HIV and health, social, and community service providers in Canada and France. So here in this paper, we published the results of the first round of the Delphi. So the general objective is to validate and select the content of the I-Score, just I talked during the first year. Specific objectives are to evaluate the relevance, actionability, comprehensibility, comprehensiveness, and cross-cultural, cultural equivalence of the I-Score's items. And we have the results of the first round. So 31 over 100 items were retained based on their rated relevance. And for the round two, which is, which is still in process, but we have the results. They weren't treated yet and published yet, but we, we have them. During the, the second round, 41 undecided items were evaluated, and we decide if we keep or reject them for a longer measure. And there were also questions on preferred timeframe lengths and so on. Ah, one of my favorite slides. So here I activated my mentor part, and I was a mentor of Anish Arora. I don't know if Anish is here in the room. If yes, hello, Anish. If not, hello, Anish. He's a PhD student in family medicine at McGill University at Montreal, and is dedicated this time as the ASAP study. So the goal is to examine time to treatment and to undetectability for migrants enrolled in a multidisciplinary care with free, rapid, and onsite treatment initiation. So it is a 96-week prospective cohort study, and data for 31 over 37 art-naive enrolled migrants were available at December 2022. And comparisons were done by birth region, immigration status, age, sex, sexual orientation, health coverage, and occupational status. And let's do some advertisement. If you are curious about Anish's work, I invite you to watch Anish's oral presentation tomorrow, Saturday here at CAR, obviously. You have the details on the screen, but you have also the details on the program. So I encourage you to support Anish and to see what he has done with my mentor, me as a mentor. Okay. Ah, the I-Score. So here, another contribution where I am being super involved, our research team is creating, validating, and implementing in HIV clinical practice a short version of the I-Score to evaluate seven barriers domains of art adherence, the I-Score. And here you can see the seven domains of art adherence, for example, thoughts and feelings, habits, activities, social situation, economic status, medication, care, and health. And for example, in social situation, we evaluate barriers like relations with others, HIV stigma, privacy concerns, thoughts and feelings. We look at, look at barriers such as acceptance of HIV, emotions, knowledge, beliefs, and motivation about art. Okay. So the seven item I-Score, the content validity of the seven item I-Score has already been tested with 12 cognitive interviews. The construct validity still needs to be tested, but it has been done. I have been involved in testing the construct validity. So let's look at some details. So the objective is to, guess what, evaluate the seven item I-Score construct validity with hypothesis testing and tools of predictive capacity. It is an online survey-based study with a prospective longitudinal design. Participants are people with HIV on art at the Chronic Viral Illness Service of McGill University Health Center of Montreal. The data were collected from January to December 2022. The participants completed the seven item I-Score measure, one question per item, so per domain, we just see, that are the independent variables of the study. And we also measured four self-reported adherence variables, and they are the dependent variables of the study. We measured the variables at two time points, baseline time one and four weeks after time two. For the statistical analysis, some few details, because I don't want to vendre la mèche, comme on dit en français, I want to, to say anything, everything today. So we evaluate the item redundancy with the Spearman correlations at time one, and we also assess the concurrent validity at time one and the predictive validity at time two of the seven items using logistic regressions, looking at the p-values of the coefficients, that's something for me, and computing the corresponding areas on the, on the curves. What's about that? What are this vocabulary? So come see me tomorrow if you want some details, some results, some explanations. I have an oral presentation tomorrow in the afternoon, just to share some results with you. The I-Score seven items are useful to predict almost all self-reported adherence variables four weeks in advance. And you can ask me, Serge, and you, do you have your own project within all these multiple projects? The answer is yes, I have my own project. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to finish it during these two years because I have some delays, troubles, and you know what, and all the stuff I've been involved with. So my idea, my goal is to develop a diversity index for samples in HIV trials, the DISH, it's the name I found, it's funny, based on sociodemographic variables and social determinants of health to be used by both producers and consumers of HIV research. So the idea of the DISH is that it will allow each research product to be rated according to the diversity of the sample on a 0 to 100% scale. So I want to mention that this project was awarded by a grant from Réseau Sida et Maladies Affectueuses of FRQS as part of their call for proposals 2021, 2022. And currently, I'm still working in the step one. I want to do a review to identify the sociodemographic variables that are most frequently used in HIV clinical trials in Canada during the last five years. So the reason, no, before that. So when I choose the demographic variables, that will help me to determine which variables will be combined to produce the DISH. So that's the reason why I'm still stuck here. Initially, I tried that method to do the famous review, a scoping review with the John Abriggs Institute methodology, but I have to abandon them because I was stuck during month and month. I lost my motivation, and I was saved by one of the members of our team, Kim Hengler. Yes, Kim, thank you. And now I'm trying a second approach, and that's heaven, because it fits so much into my needs. So the first method was very complicated and too much for my needs. So this one is much better. It's an approach suggested by the working and authors. So let's look quickly what the idea of the approach. So my idea is to select journals of infectious disease that most frequently cite Lancet HIV. Why Lancet HIV? Because it is a journal that represents good research practice. So I want to select good journals. And I will focus on journals that include HIV clinical trials in Canada, published from January 1st, 2017, which has, have an impact factor of at least three. The population is people with HIV with at least 18 years old, residing in Canada, taking art or not. The, I will consider trials irrespective of the intervention considered, comparators and outcomes evaluated. Yes, you recognize the PICO. The review process will be documented by a Prisma flow chart. And when I have all the final journals selected, I will take a sample, so a random sample of 10% of the retained full texts. And with the sample, I will compute the frequency count and the proportion of the sociodemographics variables that were reported in those journals. Okay. And it's still in process, but I'm currently writing the introduction and the methodology part to be submitted to AIDS and Behavior Journal in the next few months. So that's the end. What, what have I learned with all this process? There is some challenges. It's, it's the last slide, so it will be short and sweet. So what have I learned here? So there, there are some challenges to become a patient researcher. So it is a step-by-step process. Winning battles do not mean achieving a full victory. It can be very difficult to integrate the different parts of ourselves, the social, academic, professional, and personal selves. We must take care of the physical, psychic, emotional, and social impact of HIV before getting involved in research. And our contributions as a patient can be questioned as being non-representative, invalid, and subjective. But there are also good news. There are lots of opportunities. We can shift from a passive participant to be an active contributor in HIV. We can learn from healthcare providers, researcher, and other people living with HIV. We can replace misinformation and misconceptions of HIV with very valuable knowledge. And finally, we can act as a people between researcher and researcher and patients. If you are curious, all my process, my trajectory, opportunities, and challenges were documented in this paper. So I want to thank you, the CTN, as being a sponsor during these two years, and all the organizations and sponsors that were present in all the studies. Thank you for your attention. And sorry for the long presentation.
Does anyone have any questions for Serge?
I can't, yeah, there's mics, or if you can talk loud, maybe.
Tired. Serge, you made me tired. So I think Maureen, today at the Lunchtime Session, asked the question, how can people living with HIV get involved in research? I think you've made an excellent example of how that may happen. I think you've also been able to demonstrate for us the real importance of a mentor, right? You've got the excellence in CAR research and trained you, who's now training a PhD. And I think that's a wonderful example as well. And I think one last thing that you were able to show us is how you could pivot. You know, something that we were doing with HIV, we pivoted and adapted it to COVID. And I think that that shows our flexibility. So of all your millions of projects, which was your favorite?
That's a very good question. Because every, and every time there is statistics involved and HIV stuff and patients, my heart starts to, to, to do an enormous boom. I think it was the project with Anish. If I have to choose one, I will say Anish because I am so proud of him. And especially because Anish doesn't understand a thing about statistical software. And I coached him to be able to use statistical software. I don't know if here in the, in the room, people know the R software, so it's all programming and, and coding. And Anish wasn't able to code anything, and I coached him. I learned Anish to use R, and today he's autonomous and efficient in R. And it was an enormous pleasure to work with him. So I guess the, I will choose the Anish, the project with Anish. Yeah.
Hi.
Hello.
So thank you so much for your presentation. I was curious to what, you know, when it, when it happened that your work was, you know, could be accused of being subjective or, you know, was kind of demoted because of living with HIV. And what can we do at the CTN and at CAR to avoid that pretty obnoxious problem?
I think, I will say the same that was said during CTN conference and here at CAR. I guess it is very, very important to be helped by peers, to be part of a team, because I was in contact with so many people, with people with HIV, with healthcare providers, and even in CTN, for example, in CAC, there are people with, living with HIV. So I think it's very important to be linked quickly into a team, so to be put in contact with, with a lot of people. Because as a person living with HIV, we feel very lonely, and we think, oh, I am alone in this, in this condition. I think it's very important to, to be linked to a, to a research team or to a team in general, to have a contact with a lot of people. That's very important. Is that what you asked, or?
Oh, I was going, I mean, you're going as to how you kind of almost coped, and I want to go at like the systemic level. I want to hear about like, what are some of the bad things that had happened regarding when people, when your research was somehow accused of, if somebody else does it, it would have been objective, but because you did it, you're, it's now being accused of being subjective. And how can we avoid that problem systemically at the CTN and at CAR in the future?
Oh, yeah. Perhaps giving space to people with HIV to participate in, like, in CAR conferences or CTN conferences, to have. or CTN conferences, to have a place in postdoctoral fellowships, for example. I think it can help to give us some credibility and avoid this problem, this challenge we can have, or you're just a patient, you're subjective. So I guess it's important to, and already, in CTN, you have, for example, the CAC that have a person living with HIV in that committee. So that's important. So in the postdoctoral fellows, for example, to give place to people with HIV, to have grants, to do research. They don't need to be statisticians like me. Just having experience like a person living with HIV, I think it's enough. And everyone can have his place and has his own expertise, like I said. So my expertise is one field, but there are places for anyone. So I think it's important to let place for those people to be postdoctoral fellows, for example. And I guess, yes, it's a very tricky question, but yeah, I can think it about on other solutions, for example.
I know there's other people waiting to ask, but I think we're going to have to move on in the interest of being fair to the other fellows. No, it's great. I think it's fabulous that we've had you for two years and enriched, I think, many people I know at the team at the MUHC, but also the network itself. And I look forward to your future work with us, and hopefully you stay involved. Yeah, so thanks, Serge. So our next presentation will be given by Dr. Alice Zabrowskiewicz. She's the CTN James Kreppner Postdoctoral Fellow, currently at the University of Health Network in Toronto. And her presentation is entitled Aging with HIV: Change HIV, CTN 314.
Thank you. It is very bright from here, so I can barely see you guys, but I know you're all out there. And thank you so much for being here. I know it's Friday night, it's late in the day, so we really appreciate you supporting us here. And really, I think the theme I want to pass along is the support that I've been getting in the last two years. I would not be here if it wasn't for my mentor, a person who supported me from the very beginning and gives me opportunities to do cool things like this, to be here in front of you. So it's also been my great pleasure and honor to participate in the Change HIV study, which I'll be talking to you about today, and really focusing on the concept of healthy aging with HIV. So for anybody who's not aware of the study, I'll just give you a bit of background. So CHANGE HIV stands for Correlates of Healthy Aging and Geriatric HIV, CTN 314. It's a prospective cohort of people living with HIV who are age 65 and older. And I guess in and of itself, it's a huge accomplishment that we're aiming and are able to have this type of research and to now learn about what aging with HIV looks like. This is an ongoing study. We are ambitiously aiming to recruit 750 participants into the study, and to date have recruited just over 400 participants. COVID, as for many things, put a big delay into the recruitment, but we've been up and running, and the excitement of engaging patients in this research has been huge. We're working across three provinces at this time, with seven clinical sites in BC, Ontario, and Quebec. And we take a very broad look at aging with HIV. We really want to be able to appreciate what the experience has been like, what people's lives have been like, and what allows some folks to age well with HIV but not others, such that in the future, we have interventions and preventative strategies to help improve their lives. And so participants engage for over 18 months, sorry, participate for up to five years in the study with measures every 18 months or so, for up to three measures in each participant. We are collecting socio-demographic data, factors that are related to HIV, various confections, and history of confections. We're looking at both physical and cognitive and mental well-being in participants, including some performance-based assessments, such that we can accurately measure what, for example, cognition is looking like, and if there's any important barriers with cognitive health. We're looking at things like nutrition, at sleep, at socialization, sexual satisfaction. So things that we've heard from the participants are important to them and their well-being as they age, we want to know about it, even about their coffee consumption, which is an important thing. And we're also looking to examine the role of inflammation and the microbiome in the well-being of people as they're aging with HIV. So the broad objectives of the study is to first try and characterize the multidimensional health status of people who are living with HIV in Canada over the age of 65. And secondly, to really try and identify which factors are influencing their ability to age well, such that we can then have interventions that enhance or maintain their well-being as they age. So recently, we published our description of the cohort, trying to kind of spread the word of what we're learning from these participants. So a big thank you to all of the participants who have shared their information with us to include in the study, and also all the collaborators that are allowing this work to happen. Just going to present some of the results that we published with this preliminary part of the cohort. And just to draw your attention first to the age category, that we have been able to recruit a broad range of participants. Definitely, the age enrollment primarily has been in the 65 to 69, but we have 70 to 74, 75 to 90, and 80 plus. So, and they continue to age. So we're really getting a good range of participants who are engaged. Women tend to be younger in the cohort, and we have a deficit of women in the cohort, which is certainly reflective of the epidemic of the way it has hit Canada. And we're looking to recruit more, and we have been able to recruit some more since the publication of these results. Similarly, the duration of HIV infection, a lot of people were infected in the early days, but we certainly have those that have been infected more recently in older age. So it'll be very interesting down the line to try and compare if that's important, has living with HIV for a very long time contributed to their well-being and in what ways? And similarly, different range of CD4 counts when they were, participants were first initiating treatment, so different levels of inflammation and disease progression at that time. Some key differences between the men and the women who are enrolled in the study, and I'm including women, both cisgender, transgender women together, just given the small numbers. We see that men tend to be self-identified as primarily white race or ethnicity. And for women, again, white is the most common, but a lot more black and other participants. Men tend to be more commonly born in Canada. Across both categories, most people have retired, is over 65, but a quarter are still working and engaging, and we actually saw some correlation with that in terms of their health status and the benefits of ongoing work or engagement through volunteering and engaging in the community. So that's an important quarter of the cohort. We saw some differences in the level of education, with men benefiting from more post-secondary education compared to the women. The single divorce and widow status. So if we're, again, focusing on the context of people aging over the age of 65, 94% of the women are alone. So contributing to a lot of barriers in terms of access to things, in terms of the supports that they're getting or not getting. So an important vulnerability that we identified through the study. And similarly, the majority of them are living alone. So 73% of women in the study are living on their own compared to 53% of men. And as we're looking to the population aging, of where they're going to receive care if they were to need it, that's going to have a big impact as well. The household income, we found women to be much more vulnerable to low income as well. So a busy side, just kind of giving you an overview of the comorbidities and the risk factors that we're looking at, so really trying to characterize what does the population look like, looking at the most commonly reported comorbidities among the population. So half of folks reporting dyslipidemia, hypertension, cancer, and diabetes being the most common following that, with some differences that we've observed between women and men. For example, HPV-related disease being more common amongst women. In terms of body mass index, and something that has been a lot more talk about as we're shifting away from the issues of low weight, as people are living longer, they encounter similar challenges as the general population. And so we're seeing increase in the proportion of people who are in the overweight range or in the obesity range, particularly in women in the obesity range and the consequences of that. Some of the confections are presented here, highlight the smoking history and the prevalence of that, and again, the consequences to some of the lifestyle experiences that people have had, daily alcohol use being at about a quarter. And, yeah, skip from that. So next, we wanted to look at a few kind of more encompassing measures. So frailty being something that can give us perspective on the risk of future falls, disability, hospitalization, and mortality, which are very relevant to an aging population. In the study, we used the Free Frailty Phenotype, which looks at five criteria of frailty, including unintentional weight loss, exhaustion, weakness, slow walking speed, and low physical activity. It was initially developed in a general population, unknown HIV status. And this, in terms of age breakdown, is very similar to our study. So it was everybody over the age of 65 with a median age of 72, which is actually slightly higher than what in our group. But we see that the rates of pre-frailty and frailty are substantially higher among our study participants. So again, recognizing the downstream effects of frailty is very important. And because there is such a huge component of pre-frail participants, this is an area that perhaps can be acted upon in order to prevent the transition to frailty. And so that will be very interesting to look at in the future. We looked at loneliness and the kind of the opposite of that, the resilience or what supports resilience, so two measures for that. And the interesting finding for me from this is that the degree of loneliness, so we're seeing low level of loneliness in about two-thirds of the population, and about a fifth and a fifth of moderate and high degree of loneliness. It's similar to prior studies of the general population at a younger age, so people with a median age of 50. So, and that speaks to the relatively high degree of resilience that's in this population. So despite the trauma and the loss, people are finding ways to be resilient, they're finding ways to stay engaged, even if they're unpartnered, even if they're living on their own, they're finding ways, and perhaps it's through community and peer support, that that's occurring, but it's something that we'd want to explore in the future. And so my current work, and I'll just present kind of what we're working on at this time, is trying to understand what healthy aging with HIV looks like. And because there's just so many factors that influence health and well-being over the lifespan, there's no single definition of what healthy aging looks like. And it might look differently for folks living with or without HIV. We do recognize increasingly that it's not just the absence of comorbidities that makes somebody well, and it's this kind of holistic picture that's going to be more representative. For example, the WHO defines healthy aging as the process of developing and maintaining functional ability that enables well-being into older age. And they kind of highlight functional ability in a way that it builds on the interaction between an individual's intrinsic capacity, kind of their genetic characteristics that are in them, or their health conditions in them, and the environment. And both are equally important. So somebody who can be well-supported despite a comorbidity might still be aging well and doing well in the community. So if we put it into a conceptual model for the intrinsic capacity, again, the mental and physical capacities of an individual could be reflected in their mobility. It could be their cognition and memory, their mood, their vision and hearing, versus the environment would be things that can be on a more broad societal level. What does their physical environment look like? Is it supportive of their mobility needs? What are the people around them? Are their involvement supporting their wellness in terms of their mood? What are the person's attitudes and values and those of the society? And what are the social policies in which the people are living? And they kind of interact with each other and all together can help support someone's healthy aging. So measuring healthy aging, and as we learned a little bit about measurement tools and the importance of that, and so really, the idea of this work is to try and find a reliable way to measure healthy aging in this population, so that we can understand who's aging well, who's not, and what are the differences? And are there any actionable things from this comparison that will allow us to create interventions, preventative strategies to support people's aging in a healthy way? The problem is that there's no consensus of how we're going to measure it. So that's what we're currently working on. In the Change HIV Study, we have employed and selected to use the Healthy Aging Score. It was originally developed in the Netherlands in the general population of older community-dwelling individuals. And it follows a formative model, meaning that it's measuring several attributes of the healthy aging concept. And we felt that it really aligned nicely with some of the things that were highlighted in the WHO model for healthy aging. And I'll give you just a bit more idea of what it looks like. So it measures health across these seven domains. And for each domain, there is a specific evaluation, whether it's a questionnaire or a performance-based assessment, that allows you to score that specific domain of chronic disease, mental health, cognitive function, physical function, pain, social support, and quality of life. Grade that as low, moderate, or high, and then sum that together to give you a score. And in the general population, when this was being developed, the scores that were from 13 to 14 aligned with healthy aging and healthy aging outcomes that were of interest. And then there's intermediate aging and poor aging. The other piece of this is being able to look at what each of those scores individually is as well, so that you can tailor your interventions to whatever the challenges might be. So again, similar to what you were discussing previously. So individualizing your care and being able to measure it in an accurate way. And really, the quality and the appropriateness of an outcome measure, it's really intrinsically related to the measurement properties of whatever tool you're using. And some of these key characteristics include sensibility, validity, reliability, and responsiveness. We're currently focusing on the first two, the sensibility and validity, and I'll just describe how we're looking at this. So sensibility refers to kind of the common sense aspect of an instrument. Does the measurement tool adequately reflect what the construct is trying to measure? Are we really measuring healthy aging with this tool that we're looking at? The way we are approaching this is by completing a sensibility evaluation. It uses both qualitative and quantitative measures. So first, engaging participants who are living with HIV to give us an idea, does this tool look like it's measuring your idea of healthy aging, as well as healthcare providers, by using specific metrics of whether it's appropriate, if it's complete, if there's redundancy redundancy, see how we weigh these different health aspects, followed by a structured interview, which allows participants to give us feedback and say, well, this, actually, you're lacking this, and this is what I would incorporate. And the goal would be then to modify the score if it's required, so we're actually accurately reflecting what healthy aging means to people. The construct validity, so this reflects to the degree, to the way the score or the instrument correlates with other, other measures of, of health. And you test that through theoretically derived hypotheses. So this could be either internal relationship of the different scales, relationship to other scales that measure similar things or differences between relevant groups. So I'll just give you a few examples we're looking at. So we're looking to assess whether the score correlates with other scales that measure similar things, like self-rated health. So somebody will say, I feel that I'm healthy, and that's using the EQ5D. We're looking at frailty as another similar measure of, of well-being into aging, self-rated sense of well-being, as well as stigma and the impact of that. And the known groups, so knowing from the general population that older individuals tend to have lower scores as they're aging. So does this happen in the HIV population and some differences between sex and gender? So that's what I'm hoping to tell you about in the future when I return, what the results of these findings are. But again, I am so grateful to be here for the support that CTN has provided to me and the mentorship that I've received through this award. Thank you.
That's great to talk to you. I think we're going to learn a lot from this. It'll be very useful for many other projects that are ongoing, I think will be really helpful. There's some time for questions, if there are any. I can't see anybody. So have you had a chance to, has this work started? Do you have a chance to, to have interacted with the participants in the study to see how they're viewing, this, impressions are?
That part of the work has not begun yet, and we're going to actually ask participants who have never, or patients who have never completed the score before, so they're coming completely fresh into it and looking at it without kind of prior experience of maybe some positive or negative feelings they got from being a part of the study. So I'll be separated now.
I think there's a question.
Thank you, Alice, for the presentation. In our cohort, actually, we, we're actually seeing the impact of medication, independent of comorbidities or things like physical frailty and cognitive frailty. So I'm just like, out of like curiosity, are you looking at the medications that these patients have? And if you are, how, how, what are, what are you seeing with the data?
Yes, so that, that's a great question, and we have not completed that work yet, but it is a big part of the cohort. So looking at their entire history of antiretroal medications that they've been exposed to. I'm, I'm certain that we're going to find some differences there as well, depending on when somebody was infected and the type of classes of medications that they had exposure to. We're also looking at any concomitant medications that they're taking, both prescription, over-the-counter, herbal medication, supplementation, if that at all contributes to well-being. So it is going to be something we're looking at absolutely in the cohort. Thank you.
Hi, yeah, thanks for that. Really fascinating and will be really valuable results. I've got a bit of a background in cancer as well as HIV, and I was just, I noticed that there's a noticeable difference between the cancer rates between the men and the women, and I was just wondering if you kind of managed to find any explanation for, for why that was?
Yeah, so I, I think there's going to be differences between the, the types of cancer that we're observing, and also in the context of when somebody was infected and the treatments that were available. So things like couplecytoma would have been included in that definition. So, you know, if, if the early days of epidemic, it was much more prevalent in men, so you might see that reflected in those numbers. It's a little more nuanced. Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much. Great job. All right, so now we're going to change tacks completely, and here our third presentation from Dr. Francis Wimanzi, the CTN Mark Weinberg Postdoctoral Fellow, who's going to talk to us about antibody and memory B-cell dynamics following COVID-19 vaccination in people living with HIV.
Yeah, thank you, conference organizers. Thank you, CTN. Thank you, Julie, for the opportunity to share what I've been doing for the past one or two years. We've been trying to look at immune responses among people living with HIV in the context of COVID-19 vaccination. So we, it's been well established that people living with HIV at an increased risk of severe COVID-19. And so effective COVID-19 vaccination is of paramount importance among this group, among these people living with HIV. Well, people living with HIV continue to have chronic immune activation, chronic immune dysfunction. As such, this can compromise their immune responses. So for instance, we do not, do know that there are reports, like in hepatitis A vaccines, that we did observe poor immunogenicity against such a vaccine. And so we thought that it's important we do an extensive analysis in the context of COVID-19 vaccination among people living with HIV, and of course, extend those analyses to SARS-CoV-2 variants of concern as they do image. So for the past one or two years, we put together a cohort of people living with HIV who are well-controlled on AT, as well as controls. And we collected samples pre-vaccines up to one month post, post-dose. So we utilized this critical interaction between the, the virus and host H2 receptor to design our assays. So this allowed us to characterize binding antibody responses as well as neutralizing antibody responses. So with the neutralizing antibody responses, neutralizing antibody responses, antibodies that block the interaction between the virus and the host H2 receptor, we did that in two ways. So we used this H2 competition assay, H2 displacement assay, that allowed, allowed us to analyze the sort of surrogate viral neutralization. And we also did this using a live virus neutralization assays. So here we begin to explore binding antibody responses post-second dose and third dose. So you do see that post-second dose, people living with, with HIV in orange and controls are in blue, you do see that people living with HIV do have slightly lower binding antibody responses. But please note that, once we correct for confounders, we lost this association. And so the responses at this time point were comparable. So looking at post-third doses, you do see that the responses are markedly enhanced, both in people living with HIV as well as controls, and the responses are comparable. So over time, three, six months, these responses decline. And at some instances, you could see that the responses are even lower compared to the levels that they were post-second doses. But still, they remained, they declined at a comparable rate between people living with HIV as well as controls. So something remarkable that we also, something interesting that we observed against looking at these binding antibody responses that are targeting the wild type or the Wuhan or the Anusres strain, we did see that individuals that went through breakthrough infection, individuals with hybrid immunity displayed markedly enhanced responses. You could see that the responses are even higher compared to the levels that they were at post-third dose. So we went on to look at these binding antibody responses that are targeting the Omicron variant BA1. We did observe similar observation whereby you do see that they are comparable at this time point, you do see a good boost, they do decline over time, but they do so in a comparable manner. And again, they do decline at levels that were even less so comparable at second dose. Again, you do see very good enhancement of these responses if you look at individuals with hybrid immunity. And so, yeah, I assure you here that in binding antibody responses, people living with HIV as well as control do have similar levels of these responses. So, yeah, we went on to look at neutralizing antibody responses. So here, you do see that people living with HIV have even slightly higher neutralizing antibody responses. But again, once we correct for confounders, we do, do lose this association. And so the responses were comparable again here. So expectedly, you do see a very good boost post-third dose. The responses are markedly enhanced, both in people living with HIV as well as control. Of course, these responses decline over time. Please note, you do see that, if you look at this univariable analysis, you do see that there's some statistical significance, but note that, again, we do lose this association once we run a multivariable analysis. So, yeah, they do decline at a comparable rate. Again, in individuals with hybrid immunity, you do see a very good enhancement of these neutralizing antibody responses to the levels that are even higher compared to the levels at third doses. So we did see a similar observation in terms of neutralizing antibody responses that are targeting the Omicron variant. They are comparable at this level, you do see a boost, they do decline over time, and you do see very good responses in individuals with hybrid immunity. Something to notice that at six months post-third dose, you do see that 80% of these individuals do lose these antibodies, these neutralizing antibodies, like 80% of these individuals, their levels are below levels of detection. So this would suggest that you might need an, an additional dose. So we did the H2, this surrogate assay for viral neutralization, and we, and we did observe similar observation. So the virus has continued to evolve. So by the time we are, like in August last year, BA5 was a predominant variant. And so we said, okay, let's take a look at how the responses are. And so we did this analysis in a subset of individuals that went through breakthrough infection, that were infected at some time point post-third doses. So, yeah, we, you look at BA5 responses, the responses are significantly poorer even compared to BA1. After breakthrough infection, you do see that the responses are enhanced, but still, the responses are very low compared to BA1 responses. So this suggests that even, I mean, the, the nature of these new variants, I mean, their, their capabilities of evading the, these humoral responses. Canada also started providing fourth doses, particularly to people who are at risk, including people living with HIV. So again, we did this analysis in, only in people living with HIV. So now the, the green is going to be naive, and then the blue is going to be like individuals with hybrid immunity, like post-SARS-CoV-2 infection. So what we saw is that you do restore or you do enhance responses against the wild type. You do also enhance the responses against BA5 post-fourth dose. And you do see similar observation, whether you are like naive or you have hybrid immunity. But please note that the responses are significantly lower. If you compare to the wild type, these responses are significantly lower compared to the wild type, whether you are COVID-naive or even in, in the case of hybrid immunity. But of course, you do see that having hybrid immunity does give you a huge advantage. You do have very good neutralizing responses against this, even high, a highly immunosensitive variant. Well, the virus continued to evolve. By the time we, we were in winter, BQ.1 was the dominant variant. So we also took a look at how the responses are against this newer variant. So what we see is that the responses against BQ.1 are even significantly poorer compared to BA5. So even though that, okay, you went, you go through like hybrid, infection and you, you get hybrid immunity, you do see that the responses are still significantly lower compared to responses in BA5, suggesting that this newer variant is even more excellent at this ability to evade from these vaccine elicited responses. Another important aspect of a vaccine is the ability to generate and maintain memory responses. And so we also decided to look at how memory B-cell responses are. And so we did this analysis for responses post-third dose, and we only did this in people living with HIV. And we did this using flow cytometry-based established assay in our lab that allows us to like characterize memory B-cell that are targeting the wild type in blue and this orange in like BA1-specific memory B-cell, and dual-specific that, that, like memory B-cell that can recognize both the wild type, wild type and Omicron BA1. So what is, we see is that you see a very good boost of these responses both third dose, whether it's wild type-specific, BA1, as well as these that can cross-recognize wild type as well as BA1. So I believe I, our observation confirmed the humoral immune benefits of these third doses among people living with HIV. Please note that these responses do decline over time. These responses are very poor against these newer Omicron variants such as BA4, BQ.1. And we do show that individuals with hybrid immunity does have very good responses. Yeah, so with that, I would like to extend my sincere gratitude to my supervisors for their mentorship, Dr. Sabrina Brume, Dr. Mark Brookman, everyone who contributed to the study, especially Dr. Peter Cheng at SFU, who helped us with running these live virus neutralization assay, CTN for the support, and of course, above all, the participants without whom their research would not be possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I've had the opportunity to hear your work many times, and I always have questions. But Alice, I'll let you go first.
Thank you for a great presentation. That was so informative. My question is around the hybrid immunity, and just wondering if you had the opportunity to tease out or compare between people living with HIV compared those without, and if the amount of protection was similar or different?
Yeah, so, yeah, we, we did that. And there's no difference between people living with HIV as well as control. They, they do have similar levels of whether it's binding antibody, binding and as well as neutralizing antibody responses. We haven't done that in terms of memory B-cell, that's something that I'll work on.
Thank you. And within- Thank you. And within people living with HIV, depending on their degree of kind of immune, their immune status, is there a difference? So I'm not sure if you had the numbers to compare that.
So the, the, I mean, they, they're good. I, I don't want to. Anyway, many of these people, the CD4 count is really good. It's, the median is above 500. Very few of them are like have very low, I mean, have CD4 less than, than 500. And yeah, so you, we, we really don't see that as an influence. We, we did some correlation with nadir CD4. Still, like, we, we don't see that as an, as an influence in all those measures of antibody, I mean, humoral responses that we, we have done.
Congratulations on really sophisticated analysis that you're doing there. It's, it's quite interesting to see. I'm wondering about your thoughts on recommendations now for people living with HIV and their clinicians, right? That's the big question. In Ontario, when we've been looking at data from ICS among people living with HIV, the uptake of the initial series of two doses was really high, but the uptake of third and fourth doses has dramatically dropped off. So what are your thoughts on how to encourage people to come forward for a third dose and beyond? Timing of that?
Okay, so one thing is that, okay, our study show responses in people who are well-controlled, people who are well above CD4, like that's, it's like very high, like they're really good. We, we don't show the results for people living with HIV with, you know, very poor, I mean, with more CD4, with, with CD4 count. So that would be maybe different. But yeah. Yeah, yeah, the, the data speaks for itself. But I think by, by six months, you're almost like losing all these circulating. Importantly, you're losing neutralizing antibody responses. So I, I mean, based on that evidence is that maybe by six months, you probably need a boost. And with the virus continue to, has continued to evolve. I think we have XBB.1.5, which is supposedly to be even more highly immunivertive. And I've shown you the data is that even if you have a fourth dose, you're not doing any better with like the BQ.1, right? So I feel like, yeah, you, you might need an additional dose, whether it's like variant-specific or it's, I don't know if, I mean, even if it's variant-specific or otherwise, you might, we, we might need additional doses, like in terms of like immune responses, right? But we do know that, I mean, I, I, I don't have a scientific base to support that. But we do know that clinically, we don't see much of clinical presentation that is like really bad. And most of these are Omicron variants, so somebody will just decide not to take them. But yeah, anyways, we need additional doses based on this data.
I, I hope you'll keep it up.
I have one technical question and then we'll move on. In the people that got the fourth dose, were they bivalent or were they?
Yeah, so. People who got fourth dose were bivalent and something that we are not able to tease apart. We do know that they're bivalent somewhere like some, somewhere, some of them were BA1, BA, BA1, BA4, I think. And I mean, wait, wait, sorry. Like some, some of these bivalent were like the wild type Wuhan and BA1. And some of them were the wild type and BA4, BA5. That's something that we, we haven't been able to tease apart. Like we, we don't have enough numbers to tease that apart.
And I, I think that's a really important thing that many people are asking, you know, is as these variants move on, are the new bivalents are going to be more helpful for us than the old ones? So lots of work to do, lots of work to do. I'm sorry, we've run a little behind this evening, but I think that just shows you the quality of the work and all of the questions that we have. I hope everyone can stay for our last presentation. Again, changing tactics. And we heard a little bit from Alex this morning about the severity of HIV disease and the confounding issues of drug use and the COVID pandemic in Saskatchewan. And Dr. Kara Spence, who is our postdoctoral fellow, who is working with Dr. Marina Klein, is going to discuss with us under the covers, truth and reconciliation of HIV infection amongst Indigenous women in Saskatchewan. So welcome, Kara.
I recognize I'm between you and your Friday night, so I'll try and make sure it's not a waste of your, a good use of your time. So thank you, Marina, of course, for the wonderful mentorship and the wonderful Marina. And the not-so-shabby Stuart Skinner also supervised me. So a bunch like Sarah, I was involved in a lot of work over my two years as a postdoc. But today I wanted to talk about something that's really important to me, and that's the truth and reconciliation of HIV in Saskatchewan, particularly amongst Indigenous women. So Saskatchewan's a unique context. I think that this is a really important landscape to outline. So Saskatchewan's largely rural and remote. You know, from the middle of the province up, it's big trees and fresh water. Prince Albert is that center point of a small urban city, about 30,000 people. Two urban centers, large urban centers, large, about 250,000. And from the middle down, it's largely farmland. So Saskatchewan embodies three or includes three treaty territories. And what's really important about that is they are the most comprehensive treaty territories in the whole nation, particularly Treaty Six, which is right in the center of Saskatchewan. So news spread that the settlers were coming and the Plains Cree being the brilliant negotiators, they were negotiated very comprehensive treaties. And on the bottom right are the first findings, the 2,500 unmarked children graves in Kowis, Saskatchewan. So we've heard the rates in Saskatchewan, they continue to increase in 2022. They're at 16.9, even double the rates of our neighbors in Manitoba. However, you know, policy does make a difference. Resources do make a difference. And this bottom here, this, this four-year period was a period of, of targeted resources in HIV strategy. And it did manage to bring the rates down. The strategy was not renewed. And the rates continue to now be at the, at highest rates ever in Saskatchewan. Also of note, that's important, that in the last three years, we've had more deaths amongst the population than the previous 10 years combined. And 54% of, of those in 2022 that have died were women. So we have three real models of care that we find in Saskatchewan. We've got an acute care-based clinic in the hospital. We've got community-based care, urban-based care in the inner city in Saskatoon. And then we've got an outreach Indigenous-led model of care on, in reserve communities. And the cascades of care, it's not through the lack of passion or devotion of the people that do the work. I suggest that perhaps it's the models of care or how we're, we're providing care to the communities. So who does what well? Well, in, on reserve with wellness, we're really good at people staying active in their care. West Side Community Clinic in the inner city does a really good job of engaging. People come to get their care. Incredible people that work in that clinic. And but despite some of the strengths that we have, we don't really get past 50% suppression rates. Some of you have seen some of this data. We'll just stay here, pause here for a moment because it's important, but then we'll move on to some, you know, solutions. So women in Saskatchewan, in the last, we have a changing epidemic, or a changing epidemiology in Saskatchewan for HIV, which means that, you know, there's, there's factors that are contributing to changing trends. So in the last couple of years, we've seen the highest prevalence amongst women. You know, in 2018, 2019, it was about 34% women. And in 2020, 2021, it was near 70% new diagnoses were women. And these women are of childbearing years. 75% are, are in childbearing years. And that's found in the urban center as well as on reserve. And hetero transmission, can I point? Hetero transmission, or transmission is changing from the blue is infection, or IV drug use, and the orange is heterosexual transmission. So we see a stark difference in new diagnoses, which is also related to the syphilis co-infection. The blue is syphilis, the purple is Hep C. So a sharp increase in syphilis, which is devastating to childbearing women and their children and to the providers that are providing the care. Syphilis has been devastating. So, you know, what can we do about this? How, what, now what? Where do we take this? What's really important is the treaty, the legal obligation of treaty rights in Saskatchewan. And throughout Canada, but not all Canada are bound by treaty agreements. But in Saskatchewan, they are, we are. So the government of Canada has committed to the truth and reconciliation, and that really is beyond land acknowledgements. This requires action. You know, it's kind of like, you know, sorry, I stole your car. Now you got to walk. You know, just saying we're on land, there, there needs to be required action after that. Treaty Six also includes the Medicine Chest Clause. So it's kind of implied that the Medicine Chest is part of all the treaties. But in, in Treaty Six, it's written in there. And the Medicine Clause basically was to confirm the right to health. So the Indigenous people negotiated the Medicine Chest, which meant, you know, you will be provided health and wellness. And that's the whole, the wholeness of, of health and wellness. So that was access to contemporary as well as Indigenous medicines. These are nation-to-nation agreements and obligations. There are three founding nations in Canada, French, English, and Indigenous founding. Obviously Indigenous people were here before. But French people in the room can understand the importance of language and culture and government to maintain your personhood or peoplehood, the self-determination of a nation. And this is also under, this is international law. So Indigenous people globally fall under the UNDRIP resolutions, which affirm the right to Indigenous people's right to self-determination. So we're bound by international law and treaty agreements. So we can't really approach it any other way than the Human Rights Framework to Health. This is a, you know, who, a World Health Organization stance, but also aligns with, with Canada's universal healthcare. And it's basically that, you know, all people have the available, accessible, acceptable and adequate quality of care for the entire population on the basis of non-discrimination. So this isn't about behavior change or making better choices or all this sort of stuff. When you, when you use a framework, an applicable framework, it's really understanding predictive reasons why people might make decisions that they do. This is not, you know, blame the victim kind of thing. You know, it's predictive and sort of reasonable, some of the decisions that people make in the situation. So basic needs are required for any sort of healing and healthy decision-making. If you don't have a home or quality food, you know, your healing or your trajectory to health is, is really challenging. So the highest, and so what is health? The highest attainable standard of health is one fundamental right of a human being. So HIV, markers of marginalization. So HIV, socially determined, being a woman, you know, these are, these are markers of marginalization. So population health outcomes reflect the social, political and economic prioritization of, of a society. So when you have groups of people that are marginalized in this way, that, that's not, we can't do anything about it. It's just, you can't. It's just a prioritization. And this, of course, has concurrent syndemic overlaps, which, you know, deepen that, that vulnerabilities. Intersectional analysis, as I discussed before, are, are crucial. You know, there's multiple factors that, that give way to, to the situation. Clearly, what we've done in Saskatchewan has not worked for the population. And social and structural determinants of health are the source and solution of the, of the problem. So let's talk about what we can do. So political. It requires political pressure. We have to call it out. We, we have to speak nationally, locally, you know, amongst our people, that it's, that the, there needs to be a political will. And the political, political decisions are made by humans, human beings. So we really do need to put political will, our political pressure on our government in Saskatchewan. And I would look at that even from a national level. Economics, so adequate resources in Saskatchewan. There's north of 3,000 HIV-diagnosed individuals. And there's gracious, like, this is a sort of a liberal estimate of 2.0 FTE infectious, i.e. like infectious disease docs that care for HIV. So clearly, that's, that's not enough 2.0 FTEs to care for this population. And we also have hundreds of people on a waitlist for case management. We have five case managers in Saskatoon, and there's, you know, well over 1,000 active cases. Social, Indigenous-led, we all have much to learn from the Indigenous people. And the, the way Indigenous people care for one another, take care of one another, the land under their feet, the, the approach to care, the non-judgment, the acceptance. We, we really have an opportunity to learn and allow the Indigenous people to lead on the social wellbeing. Environmental, so land-based healing is low barrier, low cost, high impact. As docs, if there's, if there's docs in the room, you have the opportunity to prescribe park prescriptions. This is a real thing, and I encourage you to look into it. Courtney Howard is an ecological doc in, in the Northwest Territories, and she pushed for it. And it's even available in Saskatchewan. So you can prescribe fresh air, you can prescribe ceremony or a sweat lodge. And under the Medicine Chest, you know, then that would be as a prescription, then under the responsibility of the government to pay for what that would require. And it's cheaper than medication. Both are required, both are important, but not to lose sight of the impact and the, the transformational opportunity that land-based therapies have. Cultural, so integration of worldviews, that's not like, oh, yeah, you know, that's kind of nice and on you go. It's the actual integrations, decolonializing the way you, you offer care, such as park prescriptions, such as, you know, de-clinicalizing your care environments. As you saw, the acute care model just does not serve so well. You know, you have a 30% engagement rate. That's an indicator. So this integration of worldviews and integration of knowledges has so much to offer. And we're missing a lot there in the contemporary approach. Legal, well, we, we are bound and we need to adhere to the international law and the nation-to-nation agreements. Again, you know, the French people, you're, you know, you understand the importance and the value of, of demanding, of ensuring that you have protection of yourself as a people. Framework, so human approach, human rights approach to care. You know, there is really no other way as a non-discriminatory approach to care. Health systems, the peer support workers and Indigenous social care providers must be incorporated into the circle of care. And not as an add-on or, oh, that's really nice, but as adequately paid, adequately respected part of the circle of care. You'll, you'll, there's, there's so much opportunity. The peer support workers that we've included in, in some of our circles of care is, is the avenue to make the headway to, to, you know, real engagement and retention and suppression ultimately. Just care. Model of care, what we found is community-based culturally and trauma-aware care. So that was Elizabeth King, you know, just. Elizabeth King, you know, just yesterday, oh, that's aware care. I'm like, oh, that's beautiful, aware care. So, you know, just this culturally informed aware care. And, you know, how do we do this? Well, it's, you know, it's actually not that complicated. It's respect of the, of the person that you're working with, reciprocity, it's got to be a win-win, you know, it's got to work both ways, responsibility, we all have a responsibility. You know, the ability to respond to the situation is a responsibility. Relevance, what you're doing has to have relevance to the people that you're working with. And of course, reflexivity, what's your role? And, you know, just sort of taking time to reflect how you interact with, with not only your people, but the world around you. So I'm not an island, I couldn't possibly list all the people that help and support and contribute to this work, but, you know, here's some logos, and feel free to reach out. Thank you.
For the 16 of you left in the room, any questions? No? I'm afraid we've been, we've been dwindling, we've been dwindling fast. Yeah, that's unfortunate. Were there any questions for people? You know, I, I think you've raised some very, you know, crucial things, and I think, you know, some of the, the data that we had seen today and, and that you presented at the CTN meetings, it's really quite disturbing. And, and the fact that here we are in Canada, and we have rates of HIV and death in women that outrank that in many of the developing countries in the world, I think is, is, is just inexcusable, and, and we need to continue to find strategies and ways to deal with that terrible situation. Yeah. Okay, I think in light of the evening, and it's Friday night, and everybody's in your glass of wine and your lovely dinner, I think we will bring this to a close. I would like to thank all of our presenters today for sharing their research with us and their thoughtfulness that went into their projects and being able to share it with us. And I think all of you will recognize that having had this fellowship really gave them the opportunity to devote themselves to research and to, to really get their teeth into a project. And I think that it's really important, if research is in your future, to, to try and get such a fellowship, because it really does help launch your career in the right direction. I think the other message was mentors are really important, and whenever you're thinking about a project, you know, try to find the right person that's going to support you in that work. So I would like to thank our pharmaceutical companies that have contributed to these scholarships. I think you've seen that it really does continue to keep the pipeline of HIV researchers in Canada strong, and we look forward to seeing these young people become our leaders as Marina and I get old. So thank you, everyone, for this evening, and thank you for all your questions.